Call the meeting to order, you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we thank you for the opportunity to be in a country where we have a representative form of government. And we thank you for the opportunity to do the business of the public out in public. And we ask you now for your wisdom and your guidance as that business is conducted, that you will give direction to this board and that you will lead and guide the steps they take. Amen.
Okay. Before we begin, we have one change to the original agenda and that is the addition of item eight B. Are there any other changes to the agenda? That being the case, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
Move to approve.
You're the only live leader. Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we move on to public appearances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our July Employee of the Month began working for Orange County just over two years ago and was nominated by a number of her peers. Since the beginning of her tenure, this employee has been an integral part of her department and a contributor to the efforts of the county as a whole. She has an unvarying, can-do positive attitude and demeanor, never-ending determination to task, and will brighten any room by entering. She's well-liked and well-respected by her peers and often is seen as a mentor to new employees. In addition to her daily duties, she tackles large countywide projects. Most recently, she managed the county's move towards a new and more modern website, actually designing and implementing many of the pages that were released at the end of May. Her dedication to this project made the county's transition smooth and effortless. She has also led the county in its County One-on-One DVD creation and much more. I know that she's been very instrumental in my ability to get the job done as well. It is great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board just barely our Employee of the Month, Miss Ashley Jacobs. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll see you back in two days.
Our first service award goes to Louis Davis. He's been with us for five years and he serves as a custodian in the Department of Public Works.
How are you doing, Louis?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Get a little photo. Thank you. Good for you.
Our second service award goes to Joyce Cameron. She's been with us for fifteen years and she's the Deputy Commissioner of the Revenue. She's not in here. And she's not in here. And, uh, our next service award is for fifteen years, Miss Teresa Frick, Orange Librarian.
How are you doing?
Very nice. And you?
I am well. Thank you very much.
I don't see Donnie Letner in here, but Donnie Letner has been with us for fifteen years as a firefighter medic. And the last person in attendance is G.W. Gray, twenty years, and he's our Chief Building Official.
Thank you, sir.
We had two others not in.
Had a lot of personal experience with him, I think.
Indeed. He got dressed up for the occasion. And then James Goodall, twenty years, is an Orange County Library Aid. And Amy Crist, twenty years, is the Wilderness Library Assistant Branch Manager. Those two folks couldn't be here today.
Do I do this thing now?
Oh. Yes.
Sorry, I was having.
Okay. The final award is the presentation of Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And that goes to Glenda Bradley, the Director of Finance, and her entire team.
The ones that, the ones that make it English.
We've officially gotten so many that they've changed the kind of plaque that they get. Now it just gets added on every year.
There you go.
Right. And let's see then, that takes us up to the business spotlight. Donna Sherwood Graves, Colonial Forest.
I'm Donna Graves. I own and operate Colonial Forest in Gordonsville. I started in the full business when I was fifteen and opened a mow and chop in nineteen seventy-five. So we've been here quite a while. I've got some little promotional things I'm gonna pass around to each of you. We'd love to have you stop by and use your coupon. We service a large area. We service not only Orange County but Blouse County, Albemarle, and Green County. So we, we do have a, a pretty large area that, that we do deliver to daily. The business has been progressing along. We did have a setback in two thousand eight for the building burn. And I had to move to a different location. And waited for that to be rebuilt, so we're back at one four one Main Street. I do have two part-time employees. And of course, we have more staff during the holiday season, of course. But I guess altogether, we have probably a fifty-mile radius. Which is a pretty large area of forest to cover per day. We do a wide array of arrangements. We cater to weddings, bereavement arrangements for the, for the funerals. We do a lot of custom designs, which is hard to find in a lot of forests these days. So if you have someone that wants, wanna have someone that wanted a flag made, so I made a flag. I think, Karen, what did I make for you?
Evening, darling.
The doc, okay.
And dances.
Mm-hmm, for your husband. I've got a lady that wants me to do a Corvette for her for the next time she puts flowers on her husband's grave. So we do a large variety of things. And our wedding business has progressed quite a bit, so I am fully booked for weddings all during the year. We service weddings through those four counties as well. And even have, we've gone as far as Richmond and Lynchburg and Harrisonburg and Fredericksburg for those also, depending on when again. But I have a really good sales staff. They're very helpful, they're very dependable, which is really hard to find in a, in a business nowadays also. But we'd be more than happy for them to stop by and see us sometime. We usually turn our product over every, every two or three months and we always have new product in. And our flowers are shipped in from South America, Florida, California, Holland. And then they are shipped to supply houses. And we get them from the supply houses out of Richmond and DC and Lynchburg. So we have a daily supply of flowers also. And we try to keep our inventory turned as much as possible so you never get old flowers. Is there any questions anybody wants to ask?
We're an easy crowd.
Are you, are you open for walk-in business during, during what hours?
Our walk-in business Monday through Friday is nine to five. And on Saturday, we're open from nine to twelve.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
You're welcome, glad you came. Okay. Next on the agenda would be public comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Mr. Victor Kings, one five two seven eight Coxville Road.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In May, I believe it was the last meeting in May, you all had conservation easements on the agenda. And you made a decision to, I think, remove them from the agenda or, or in some cases, most cases, they'd be removed from the agenda and it would be taken care of by the Planning and Zoning Director. I'm asking you to reinstate that item to the agenda. I mean, the, the people need to know about conservation easements. And they, you actually need to know more information instead of less, less information. So I ask you to please put those, restore that to the agenda. As citizens are paying a heavy price for the Piedmont Environmental Council and the conservation easements. They are bad long-term for Orange County and they are bad long-term for the citizens of Orange County. As we sit here, we are allowing ourselves to be subjugated, subjugated. I mean, yoked, conquered, or being under control. Now, this is slowly but surely happening. And it's happening because of a well-meaning program called beautification, started back in the mid-sixties by LBJ and Lady Bird Johnson. It has been co-opted into something else than what it was originally being talked about. I remember during the time it was being talked about. And I envisioned it being beautification of the highways as we see when we go to different states and the medians of the interstates and four-lane highways and longer sides of the roads and things such as that. But it's now something else. It reminds me of the classic horse analogy where a group of individuals started to build this beautiful horse and as it was co-opted and co-opted and changed and so forth, then it turned out to be a camel. Something totally different than was originally designed. And I think this beautification program has turned out to be the same way. Something called easements. The folks putting their property into easements are selling their freedom and control for a price, a price called tax credits. And it's nothing short of a bribe. And, and we, you and I, are paying for that bribe. And as more and more properties go into easements, the larger and larger the net is being cast and the quicker we're being caught and reeled in. It is limiting our options today, right now, as you said. And in turn, controlling our decisions and before long, controlling our lives and our freedoms. Our forefathers and those in wars since paid a heavy price for freedom. Their lives, their families, their wives, their children. Some were tortured, some were hung, and and that was all for freedom, freedom for you and I. We are letting this freedom erode away because we don't wanna be, to make a little noise. It, it might not be politically correct. Or the opposition might say mean things about us. Well, our forefathers also had those that didn't want to do anything. They wanted to stay with the king or they wanted to do nothing. So it left the last third of them to do the heavy lifting. But freedom was too important. Yes, freedom, the words, "Give me liberty and give me death" still ring today. That's how passionate they were about freedom. When you don't have freedom, then that's you, you have a, a real passion for it. We must inform our citizens that Piedmont, Piedmont Environmental Council and easements are bad. They're bad for Orange County and they're bad for our citizens. The county is slipping away also. The people's freedom is in jeopardy. That's what Piedmont Environmental Council is all about. They want control. I do not understand how anyone, knowing the brutal price paid by our forefathers and by those that's been in wars since, can be content and satisfied selling their freedom and control into an easement for a financial bribe. It's nothing short of a bribe. Freedom and control has always been a basic right and principle guarded by farmers. How can they not see the long-range impact on the lives of all of us? And our freedoms, how can anyone be, be bribed to take away, which will take away our sovereignty and, and they're actually taking our rights? If this program is so good, why do we have to be bribing the participants? It's bribery and nothing less. It forfeits our freedoms and sovereignty. Our people must be informed of how bad this program is. We must guard our freedoms and our rights. If not, they will be whatever any leader or government or majority of the voters allow them to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one of our service award members back in the audience. Miss Joyce Cameron, fifteen years as the Deputy Commissioner of the Revenue.
Oh, you're already there. We'll do this way. All right, thank you. Okay, I assume then we had nobody else in the room?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Board, count it.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one thing. I've received a couple of communications from a constituent, actually at this point raising a question about county ordinances with respect to discharge of firearms in neighborhoods. And have had one conversation with the county attorney about that, just to see what other localities are doing and what might make some sense. And I guess I, I would like to suggest that we consider starting a conversation about that situation and whether or not there's anything that, that we can or should do going forward. And I'm not at all interested in layering on additional regulations and/or any of those kind of things, but it does appear that neighborhoods could be a unique situation, at least under some definitions, about discharging firearms. And so it's something to, to talk about. I know Tom has looked at what some surrounding areas have done and if you want, he can make a couple of comments now, I guess. All I'm really suggesting is that we talk about it a little bit and just see what, what we want to do as a county with respect to that, that issue. I mean, I, I guess, is it safe to say that quite a few or a significant number of counties have at least some form of firearm?
State law allows it. I brought the code section, fifteen point two twelve oh nine allows counties to prohibit outdoor shooting of firearms or arrows in areas of the county which are, are the opinion of the governing body, too populated, that it would be dangerous. What most of the counties I looked at do that do regulate is they have some minimum footage requirement that you can't discharge a firearm unless you're at least six hundred feet. Was a common one I saw in three or four jurisdictions, that you can't discharge a firearm unless you're at least six hundred feet from a dwelling. So that, that would pretty much eliminate discharging in tighter subdivisions and neighborhoods like that. But it, it's all over the place and not all jurisdictions do regulate it. The ones that do, the common way to do it is just to say you can't discharge a firearm within X feet of a dwelling house or of a business. You can legally do that.
As I understand it, the issue is in a subdivision type setting. At least that one constituent that's been contacting me about it, so.
Well, and that's whether the state law is based on public safety, that the, the board has the authority where if you're concerned that it could be a public safety issue to elimi- eliminated or limited in certain areas.
I would also like to hear from the sheriff on the matter, whether it's something that, that, you know, he is frequently called to respond to either a complaint or a situation like that, or whether it's, is anything that can even be enforced and all this. I mean, there, there are tons of issues with this, obviously.
Is it, is it that they're complaining of the noise of it? Or is it that they feel that there is a safety issue or A or B in both?
Both, both. Apparently, what, what's happening is that particularly on the weekends, I guess in this case, it's neighbors on, it's more than one neighbor, have friends over and they shoot for hours at a time. And in a, what I, I don't know exactly which houses are involved, but it's the ones I think it is. These are fairly small lots. And it's both pistols and rifles and everything else, and so. It's something to talk about. I, I guess that's my only position at this point.
Is that area zoned residential?
Uh, I didn't look to see what the zone, it could very well be, they're, they're fairly small lots.
Cause you're saying, you're saying small lots, so it would be less than two acres, you know?
Or it could be two acres. I mean, I, I'm not, again, I didn't look to see which houses were involved, I think at this point, just. End of my cut. I know. This is, this would, this would not be a fun journey to talk, to even talk about, but.
No, I, I live in a wooden house in the woods and woodpeckers are not my friends. And I live closer than six hundred feet to people. And they don't come back.
Well, I think most of, I think there's an exception for the owner of the property.
Okay. Anything else? Well, then I have one. On Saturday, the sixth, tourism, the Office on Youth, Parks and Rec, the R and U Sports Foundation, the Rec Foundation, a variety of donors and other people had the playing in the park event. And it was absolutely wonderful. We had over three thousand people in attendance. Although I did hear from a couple of people, it wasn't on the fourth. There were reasons it wasn't on the fourth, but ideally, it was fantastic. The fireworks were great. I know R and U Sports couldn't keep up with the food demand. The lines were rather hefty and they kept selling out of stuff. So it was a great event. And if you didn't get a chance to make it last year, you oughta come next year. It'll be even better, right, Tim? All right, thank you all. Okay, with that then, we'll move on to the action items. First one, request for additional supplemental appropriation for legal services, Glenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You probably remember a month or two ago, I came before you for an additional appropriation for legal services. And these are the fees that we pay that are related to the sale of property for delinquent property taxes. And at that time, we did a supplemental for thirty thousand dollars, which we thought was gonna get us through the rest of thirteen. But in the meantime, we've had more bills come in. And at this point, we need another appropriation for about six thousand dollars to pay the bills that we actually have in hand at this point. And, you know, I gave you the, the, some reasons for that last time that have to do with heirs coming forward and making claims and additional work that has to be performed as part of the process because of that. And Mr. Carter is here tonight to answer any specific questions that you might have about that.
Okay. Do we have any anticipation of when we're going to solve these things? Henry?
We have a sale scheduled, I think it's October twelfth. And just looking at the list of the properties on it, looks like we've got a million dollars in appraised values of properties. We're not gonna sell them all on one day. But we are, we spent the last two years sort of cleaning up stuff that needed to be cleaned up. Now we're getting into worthwhile properties. I mean, we've got a hundred and forty-seven acres, fifty-five acres.
Okay, but I mean, the question is, then, you're looking sometime in fiscal fourteen that
Oh, yeah.
there should be some sort of income against the charge.
I don't have the list with me, but there are some surplus properties that should come due. And I'm still arguing about the hundreds house that somebody wants.
Okay. Henry, are you in a, are we in a position that once these are sold, that people will have clear title to them? And has all of that been cleaned up at this point? And you're, so they're, that will add to their value if they can get a clear, clear title.
Yeah, they get a clear title.
Once the properties are sold, we do have to hold the funds for two years. So if we sell them on October twelfth, we won't, the money in the bank, we'll put it in the, we'll, the courts will hold on to it for two years.
But there should be some coming due this year and some coming due next year. And I will get that list, I meant to get it Glenda earlier, but we will get it there.
All right, well, that, that was more my question because I know it's gotta sit in escrow, but you, we should have other things that come along to offset the costs that we're getting from.
And, and I don't anticipate that the county is going to have to be paying the money that it's been paying. We will recover that.
Okay. All right. I, yes, if there's nothing additional, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I move, we appropriate the additional six thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next amendment, personnel policy, section two point three, incorporate revised public safety evaluations. Julie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at a previous meeting and at today's meeting, we have approved new personnel performance evaluations for public safety employees, the Sheriff's Office, nine-one-one, and Fire and EMS. And our performance evaluations are incorporated into the personnel manual and recognized by the personnel manual. So we'd like to ask you to just recognize those and have them be incorporated into section two point three of the personnel manual.
I have a, just a question for clarity. Under merit pay, it says each year in the budget process, the board of supervisors will approve an amount of money to be used to provide salary increases to the top performing county employees?
It can be zero.
I mean, I, I guess the only other thing is if you just said may approve an amount, then it's, I mean.
Okay.
Because. I mean, I, I don't care, I'm just saying it says that every year we're gonna do it, and I know that it doesn't happen every year. It's under E merit.
So you'd like to change can to may?
Well, it says will. The board of supervisors will approve an amount of money.
Okay. Let's be the third paragraph second.
Yeah, and I guess then that third paragraph, it might need to be changed, but it, as long as, I mean, I'm. And then it says, at the beginning of each fiscal year, each constitutional officer and department director will be allocated a portion of their merit pay funds for planning purposes. Just, again, I think I would change that will to may be allocated.
I don't know if I change it that way, I, I think a better way to say it, um, it would be allocated um, if, if the board approves.
That might work, yeah.
Because if we approve the money to do it, then we should follow along with, with the idea of the merit pay, because that's been around for a while, and we talked about it. Just we didn't have any money to do anything, so it sort of went aside, but you, you still, the people that do a particularly good job should be rewarded for doing a better job than average employees.
May- maybe you, in the second line of that fourth paragraph, you change the word the to any. So that would read.
Send it in.
In, in the second line of that fourth paragraph, it starts out be allocated a portion of the mer- be allocated a portion of any merit pay funds.
Of E.
The, the.
Okay.
That ties it back to Shan's first point of may. Did I, did I get you there? I was rambling rambling.
No.
With that, of course, you still need to put it in your budget.
Well, yeah, you still have to do the first sentence.
Yeah.
And then we'll find out if they call us nice or ogres.
Can't be worse.
They call us nice or ogres, so. All right. Is anything else on that, or can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion to approve as revised. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, carries four zero. And then the last is the cola. Glenda.
Um, during the budget process, um, the board had asked, um, that we might, uh, look again at the end of the fiscal year thirteen to sort of assess our, uh, financial situation and the status of our unreserved fund balance, to see whether or not, um, a cola of some sort could be implemented for county employees and social services. And we have done an estimate of what our unreserved, uh, fund balance is looking like at this point. Um, and we're estimating that we will have about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand over our eighteen percent, uh, fiscal stability reserve. Uh, the cost to do a two percent, um, cola would be two hundred and sixty-two thousand, and it could be implemented, um, in July if the board chose that. Um, so I just wanted to bring that information before you, and, um, it is based on some estimates. I attached my worksheet in your, um, in your agenda package, uh, but I, in looking over the past two years, the things like accruals for revenues and payables have been, uh, remarkably consistent over that period of time, so I felt, um, you know, fairly confident about this estimate.
Okay, and that would still be only a little more than half of what, what we should have, or coming back in, so. Discussion?
I guess I have a, a, a question. When I, when I saw this, I, I I wondered, s- since this, uh, additional monies above the fiscal stability reserve is has a, is one time in nature, should we be thinking in terms of, of, uh, applying it to something like a bonus, which is a one time event, as opposed to, uh, adding it to salaries, which is not a one time event? I, I never answered my own question, but, but that was the, the, the question that I, that I debated with, with myself, and, uh, I mean, that, that's the, the, the one issue that I see is, on the one hand, you're, you're creating a, a form of a commitment going forward year after year, uh, whereas other ways, you, you, you could, you could find a mechanism to do it as a one time situation, which it might or might not be. You never know what next year's fiscal stability reserve's gonna look like, but, uh, and I don't know, I, I, that was for what it's worth, my, my thought about it.
I know when, um, we talked about it, and, and at that, at that time, we had quite a lot of money left in our contingency fund, and the conversation that I recall having was about the contingency money, and over the last couple months, that's been hit several times over some things. I don't, I don't know exactly what's in there right now.
It's about ninety-five, I believe.
Cause it was, it was, it, it was really funny, cause it was like right at that number that we were gonna need in order to take it from the contingency, um. I, I guess some, somebody would say it's six and one half dozen of the other, but, um, I'm, I'm ki- I'm, I'm hearing a little bit, cause that's hard money. We know that money's there, this is, and with all due respect, this is your estimate.
Mm-hmm.
So when that estimate isn't right, are we having to pull it from somewhere else? You know, if it's off by any, it's not four hundred thousand dollars, it's, you know, so.
Or it'd have to be off by forty-five percent.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I.
I think she's better.
I, I did try to be conservative. I mean, I went, you know, in all the places that I had to estimate, I, I did go to the conservative end of it.
Well, with that being said, we estimate all of our budget. Nobody even knows what our budget is or how much money we have at any one day, so it's all estimated. So, uh, you're, you're right there, um, um. I, I hadn't considered what Jim was proposing, but that might be an alternative as, alternative as well.
I, I'm not sure I'm proposing that necessarily, but I, other than for discussion, that's all. And it, I mean, it seems to me that it, it actually is a, could be of benefit to the employees, because otherwise it takes them twelve months to get two percent, whereas if a bonus is paid, if it's paid one time, they get it immediately. If you, sometimes they pay bonuses twice instead of once, you'd, so it's, it's, I'm, I'm not trying.
Well, Sam gets immediately.
Well, yeah, sure, I mean, it's, they're, you know, that, that's one thing you can't run from very easily, but, um. I, I guess I'm, i- if, if I, the, the more I think about it, the more I'm inclined to treat it as a bonus as opposed to salary increase. I don't know, i- from an implementation standpoint, is there, is that a, does that create a, you know, insurmountable set of problems, or, or even any problems?
Um, from just getting it done, um, not really. I think that, um, you know, if it's a bonus, um, that, uh, we, um, I think there's a rule that you don't, um, pay VRS on that, you know, and things like that, um, that would have to be considered, and then, um, if it's a bonus, you know, would, would you do it all in one lump, or ha- you know, how would you do it? Would you do it at, you know, now or in December, or? Um, but, I mean, I, I think it's a legitimate, um, point that you make about, um, about it being a one time, uh, identifiable revenue source.
And the other thing that, that I thought about, and I don't know what your flexibility is, but it's really last year's money. Whereas if we put it in the salaries, it's two thousand fourteen money. It's carried over, I, I recognize, but it really is in the, at that point, it's in the two thousand fourteen budget, not the two thousand thirteen budget. Minor point, the auditors might or might not care about that, I don't know, but it's, uh.
Well, I think in, in that, uh, in my estimate there, that those, the, the difference between the two years is sort of, uh, sifted out of that number.
Yeah, I saw it too.
Right, so I, I don't think there would be an issue there, um. And I was, you know, a little surprised at how consistent our levels of accruals for things like payables had been. Um, but, you know, that's, I can't guarantee that a, a, you know, something unforeseen may come in.
At what point in time would that number, would you be even more confident in, in a number, or are you there now?
Um, I, like I said, I was at, I was conservative enough with this estimate that I'm, I feel very comfortable with it. I wouldn't put it before you if I wasn't. Um, I really think it would be this or better, but, um, we won't know that until the audit is complete.
But, but there's no event hanging out there that, that could go one way or the other that substantially affects this, I guess that's a better question.
Right. No, and. No, nothing, nothing, mm-mm.
Do, do you, s- since you're the boss, you, do you have an opinion on, on, or did I just open up a can of worms, which wasn't my intent, obviously, but.
Well, part of the reason, of course, we bring it before you is that it was discussion at the board level, um, during the budget process, particularly in light of the schools and their increase that was incorporated as part of their budget. Um, it's a difficult thing to discuss, because needless to say, we, we believe the county employees deserve it, we're in favor of it. We also know that there are competing, um, priorities. Would it, would it upset me at all for the employees to, to get this? Not at all. I think it's deserved, and I think it's been a long time, if you look at the span of five or six years, as far as their increases go, um.
What about the issue of wage versus bonus? You have any?
Well, th- the, um, for the, for the VRS aspect, I think that it depends on whether the employee will be here for a while. If they're here just the month of July, they'll get twelve months of a bonus, and we'll thank them for the work they did last year. If we wanna have that linger over twelve months and have them recognize that every, um, vegetarian pay period, or twice a month, or every other mon- every other week after January first, then we would do the, um, the increase in salary.
Does the two sixty-two, is that fully loaded with all of the benefits and VRS and every, everything's in it, I'm trying to.
So if you did a bonus, it wouldn't be two sixty-two?
Right, it would be less than.
Could you please find out, how hard would it be for you to, um, to?
It was like a hundred and fifty-five, I think, wasn't it? The time you took out all the other.
Um, yeah, I, I would really have to, uh, rework, work with my spreadsheet to figure that out. Because you still have things like FICA and, um, basically that.
Well, it could kick some people into a higher tax bracket, I mean, all sorts of odd things happen.
Well, I'm actually, I'm actually thinking if it's the same amount of money, you get a larger increase if it's a bonus, if we still spend the same amount of money, if it's not having to go to VRS. You still plan if it, but if it, I don't know how much of that is VRS. Guess.
Oh, okay, um, hmm.
Like eight percent or something.
Yeah, I need my calculator.
Would you like to rework your spreads- would you like to rework your spreadsheet and come back at seven?
I can do that.
Well, I mean, that's why, I didn't know how long.
Or, I mean, if I can get hold of a calculator, I can probably come close to it.
Look at that. It's even got the big buttons for you.
I guess part of why we, we bring it at this meeting is to implement it for the fiscal year, that's why, um, to get it into the computer.
Well, we did ask you to do it.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Hmm, I, I think it would, um, no, that's not right.
Maybe it makes more sense rather than.
Why don't you write it down and look at it before you say it out there?
Yeah, why don't you, or, or if you
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Or if you wanna go play with your spreadsheet and bring it back to us at, you know, at, at later in the, in the day, whatever you.
Right, I'm coming up with, um, two thirty-two, seven ten.
So it's not that much.
But let me work it back the other way, just to confirm.
Well, e- even if VRS is ten percent, which we know it isn't, it'd only take twenty-six thousand off of it.
Okay, so it's not that much.
So it's, it's something less than twenty-six, probably more like twenty thousand.
Right.
I take it if you were, if you were to do a, a bonus, you would do a, the, essentially a ten, two percent bonus for everybody, you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna differentiate among the staff in any way, and let, or would you, I guess, is what?
Well, that's one of the differences you have between a bonus and a, um, cola. Cola is just everything costs more, here's an improvement in your pay to counteract it. Bonus carries a stipulation in my mind that you've earned a bonus. And usually there's a differentiation that you're talking more merit pay. However, in this instance, I understand how you could do it, but I, from my opinion, I'd rather see the, the two percent go as a, um, actual cola. I think that works better in the long term. Yes, it's a commitment, uh, for next year and the year after and the year after. But the employees make the commitment to us and the county, and I think we can make the commitment back to them. That was the idea when we, when we said to bring this back, if there was money left, based on what the schools were able to do, that, uh, we would look at, at equalizing the field. So from my opinion, I would rather see the, the cola. But that will depend on what three out of four of us say.
And if you recall, eighty-one thousand of the school's increase was found from finding, um, pockets of money in the county incre- of the county's budget to, to fund that.
I did get a piece of good news, um, yesterday from the Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center. And, uh, we're due a credit of, they're estimating eighty-five thousand for FY thirteen, so it was another little piece of good news for their, our financial.
How much did it come after us last time that we underpaid?
Yeah.
Seventy, I think it was seventy-five or something, yeah.
So we're getting eighty-five back?
What, what are, um, I, 'cause I can't remember off the top of my head right now, what are county employees paying each month for their insurance?
Twenty dollars a month.
And a hundred percent of any, you know, dependent coverage.
Someone wanna reach out and make a motion for something? Being known, I will make the motion to, um, institute the, the COLA. Do I have a second? Motion.
Well, I don't know yet, just, be, be, be slow, Teal.
We're spending money, this is hard.
Yes, but we're spending money with, with extra funds that we have for people that have not been given raises, majority of the years that I've been here. And most of them have, have been asked.
So why haven't you given them raises, Teal?
Same reason you didn't, we didn't have the money.
I gave them ra- we gave them raises last year, so that's, that's, um.
Yes, but, but you're gonna have to discuss this.
No, I know, I know, I know. I wanna look into, um, the insurance thing, too.
Which part of it, the?
The, the twenty, twenty dollars?
The contribution? As far as, uh, raising it or, um?
No, the, the part of paying it.
Oh, okay.
Um, can you come back and, 'cause you're probably gonna have to give us some answers, what, what, if we picked up the twenty dollars?
How much that would be?
How much that would be?
Okay.
And even if you don't come back, if you give the, give it to Julie, or whatever, to us, is that, is that a problem?
Okay. No, no problem.
'Cause I'd, I'd like to look at that, too, please.
Okay.
Are, are you, are you se- you're separating that from this?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that's a, the, my understanding is that for this to be implemented for the fiscal year, you really need a decision now.
We've, when do we, we pushed the button, to speak, um, it's a little silly when you say it out loud.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Um, before the, the next meeting of the, uh, council.
I was just asking, come back tonight.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Uh, we, we, it'll be a challenge, but we pushed the button, um, after the board meeting, the second board meeting.
The next board.
Well, no, I think we should, i-if you can provide information, we should do this.
I can provide those numbers, that's not a problem.
You wanna make a motion to, or just you wanna stay silent?
How about Teal, how about Teal withdraw his motion at this moment and we just, um, defer action on this until?
That'll be fine, I'll withdraw my motion based on taking action, uh, later time this evening.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, with that, then we move on to appointments to boards, commissions, committees.
I have, I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
If you're ready, uh, I'd like to appoint, uh, Thomas Graves to the Health Center Commission to fulfill the remaining term of Ms. Julia Barnes, which I believe to be about twelve months, give or take a month or two.
Okay.
I didn't actually look at the date, but it's that order of magnitude.
All right, any others? Uh, have we reached out to any of these other people that have, whose terms are expiring to see if they still want to serve?
We haven't contacted any of them recently unless, um, unless it's noted on here. I know some of them weren't interested in, um, being reappointed, but I think they either resigned or we notated it on the memo, but.
Mm.
For example, um, like Pat Neighbors for Social Services Board, I know she's up for District One, we haven't reached out to her recently, but we'd be happy to do that, update it for her.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, just, uh, an update on whether, if, if they're not interested, there's really no need for us to call. Because that's, I mean, that's what I've been doing, is when I, I see one show up and, and of course y'all, they did something with Ray, so I, I gotta come up with somebody else for Youth Commission. But, yeah, I, if we could, it, just habit that, you know, that, which we get sometimes, that their terms are coming up and they want to keep serving. Then it, it makes it easy, we just reappoint, we don't have to try to find each other and, and communicate.
Okay.
Means you have to find them and communicate.
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Uh, okay, um, in that case, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Uh.
All right, and then we have two other items, Julie, that you have, the Falkir Housing and the Fire Chiefs.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, Falkir Housing is, um, interested in the, the board appointing someone or giving them recommendations. It's a, um, annual contract for the administration of the two hun- the twenty thirteen indoor plumbing rehabilitation program. And, um, we don't have any suggestions at this point, but we can work on some suggestions if the board would like to, um, appoint someone.
Do we any, have any information about when they meet or how often or what they do or anything more than, than this letter?
I don't.
I mean, I, for one of.
We're, we're here and we want you to join.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all I know about, I never, I never heard of them before this letter, frankly.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
That's.
We can find that out.
Have they been active in Orange County at all, or, I mean, it'd be nice to, has anybody heard of it? I mean, I hate to ask somebody to represent the county and we don't, you know, without feeling that it was worth their time and of value to the county, so I, I think we need to ask. I, I would like to, uh, have a few questions answered to see what, what they're up to and the like.
What the commitment is.
What the commitment is.
Okay.
What is, what's the expected outcome of our joining, right?
I think we're already part of the service area.
Yeah, I think we, I think we've been declared, but, uh.
You, you don't have a choice about, uh, joining per se, you're part of the service area regardless of whether you have a, um, representative or not, it's just whether you have a vote. And I don't know how often they, they meet.
Apparently, we've been part of it for some time, 'cause it says in the letter, historically, the five counties being served were Falkir, Madison, Orange, Rappahannock, Culpeper. I don't know how far back in history that goes, but that's what they said.
Yeah, historically could mean last year.
Yeah, that's right, but.
I like your question, though, you know, what have they done here in Orange and, you know, how big of a chunk, you know, of it?
Right. And what kind of commitment are we asking from a person to take?
Apparently, this, um, has historically been the, the five counties, they mentioned Falkir, Madison, Orange, Rappahannock and Culpeper, and they've expanded the service district to, um,
To page.
those that are in that, that list below there.
Right.
Um, Stafford, Fredericksburg, Winchester, uh, Rapp- no, uh, Spotsylvania, Clark, Frederick and Warren. The original five counties are, um, those on the left.
And I would also ask where they meet, because i-if, if this involves a trip to Warrington, the, the person that would represent us would need to know that.
Um, if I'm.
Or does it rotate, I mean, I don't know what it is, sorry.
We can find out what the commitment is for the, the board member, um, if I can draw your attention to the second page, the bottom of that paragraph, it does note that, um, this program is about providing construction services to homes that have no plumbing in or water. And they're looking for a county resident who works in the building department or in some form of environmental services, contractors, et cetera. Um, so they're looking for someone in that, that field of expertise.
I, I nominate building official to wear shorts to meet.
Well, I know you're cracking a joke, but I actually don't, because I'm with Jim, if he's gotta drive up to Warrington and sit for five hours and it's one house in Orange and everybody else, no. I know you're joking about the shorts and all, but.
Even with the shorts, I wouldn't put you through that.
I wouldn't either.
At least, at least without telling you. I guess that's my, my general point is, is look, let's be upfront with, with the person that might be.
Bamboozled.
Otherwise bamboozled, if that's correct.
We can bring you more information.
All right, well, in that case, let's talk about the Fire Chiefs.
Sure, um, the Fire Chiefs meet once a month and, um, they meet with Chief Hartness and members of the fire company. And they have reached out to Chief Hartness, um, through one of the Fire Chief meetings to ask for a board represent- representative to attend the, um, monthly Fire Chief meetings.
And when do they have these meetings?
It's the fourth Wednesday of the month. My suggestion also would be on this is to incorporate the two volunteer rescue squads, so that not only are we hearing the concerns of the fire companies, but also the rescue squads. I think one of the benefits of this also is you're gonna be able to get a better understanding of the fire EMS system in Orange County. Better understand our strengths and weaknesses and our future challenges.
And they meet on the fourth Wednesday, what time?
Seven o'clock.
And then, um, what concerns do you have?
Do I have with this personally? I, I have no concerns, I, I think it would actually be a good thing, because public safety is a huge part of the county's budget. I think, since you guys are the decision makers, that the more you understand of, again, the strengths and weaknesses, the, the future challenges of both the career and the volunteer, um, fire and E- EMS operations, that you're gonna be better to make decisions, as we become, um, come before you.
Is the meeting here in the, yes?
Um, usually we meet here in the county building. The one change, and, and I've taken it upon myself to make from the Fire Chiefs' request, is the Fire Chiefs have asked to meet with you. My feeling is that if we're getting a board member to give up their time, we should be including the volunteer rescue squads, because they also have, um, strengths, weaknesses, concerns that, um, can be addressed. It would also help get the volunteer fire and rescue companies together to meet on a regular basis.
Would they be open, would the Fire Chiefs be open to including the rescue companies?
I would hope, but again, I can't make that decision for them, but my personal feeling is if you're giving up your time, then we need to get the most bang for the buck.
And, um, while the, the point of having the liaison, would it be even maybe more beneficial if we each, each went and, and maybe, you know, one month, Teal does it, one, you know, if you're saying to use it, obviously, as a, um, um, one, to help formulate and build that relationship and get that understanding, but also the education part, so if it's, if it's just me doing it, you know, is, is every other supervisor getting that opportunity, um, and, and, 'cause the main role is, you know, opening up, um,
It's gonna open up some communication and dialogue.
lines of communication, but it also, it, it gives them the opportunity to meet with us and all, you know, all of us kinda at one point or another be there as a representative from the board, and then we come back and the information.
I don't know if it'd be beneficial to do it maybe every month, but maybe like assign a board member per quarter, because it's gonna take you a, a meeting or two to, to get the, get an understanding of what's actually going on, what challenges we're facing, depending on time of the year, whether it's budget season or if we're, you know, trying to develop, um, mutual, um, how co- operating procedures for the county, um.
And it would go in the organizational meeting every January to be, um, appointed. If y'all chose to do it, we can have it be reappointed every January in the organizational meeting and folks could give reports during committee comment as to, um, what happened, if you wanted to disseminate information.
Yeah, realistically, I think if we're gonna do it, we should assign a person specifically for the continuity of information.
Okay.
Uh, that doesn't preclude the rest of us from showing up from time to time, just one, one extra of us, because otherwise we have a, a meeting. But, yeah, I mean, I think we should all jump in every once in a while, I already have a meeting the last Wednesday of every month, um.
So do I, I just checked, I got that Lake County Advisor Committee, it's the list.
And I also think that if, if this is agreed upon, that they would also be willing to adjust their schedule in order to, to meet the needs of the board. I don't think there's anything set in stone that, you know, it has to be the fourth Wednesday, so I, I'm sure if, if you're interested, they're gonna be somewhat flexible to ensure that, uh, you're gonna have the opportunity to attend.
Yeah, but if, if they're already doing that meeting at that point in time, all the time, everybody's made an adjustment to their schedule and it's a lot easier for us to try to feed in one person than rearrange everybody else. Kinda like the, uh, thing we're doing now, trying to get every cat herded into one spot. It's a lot easier to find one more cat to slip in than it is to rearrange everybody else. You know, it's, it's not like when we're fourteen and we go, okay, I'm free, let's go, it's, you know, everybody's got commitments, so.
Oh, I understand. And we do have some flexibility and when we've, when we meet, if, if you would like, I can go back to this next Chiefs' meeting, bring up the rescue squad, um, idea and also see if there would be some flexibility as far as naming a different day. And I could work with the board if there is a day that would be more conducive for a board member's attendance.
Um, I, I, I like that idea and, um, I would, I would be willing, um, since everybody else is jumping up and saying that they're willing to do it, um, or can do it, um, I'd be willing, I just, I just know the last Wednesday of the month I have a commitment, so, but that would allow you the time to go back and, um, talk to them and see, um, you know, take your id- ideas back to them and maybe it could start in August.
That's, sounds like a plan.
And that would obviously just be through to the end of the year until we have our, um, organizational meeting in January.
Yeah, the same with me, if they moved the date and, you know, then, then I could conceivably do it, but I, my Wednes- my fourth Wednesday is already spoken for, exactly the same time, seven o'clock.
And we don't meet again until the, that fourth, um, Wednesday, so maybe in the meantime, I could get some input from, um, from y'all, what might be some better days?
Do you say it's Thursday?
I don't know if there are any better days, yeah, I'll tell you Tuesday, Thursday won't work.
Yeah, I don't think there are. Tuesday, Thursday won't work, Mondays are out, 'cause that's town council meetings, I mean, it's Wednesday, dude.
Sounds like a plan, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, uh, discussion items, the caution sign for the intersection of Marquis and, um, yes, I, I don't think it's Monrovia, I, I think it's, um, La Hor- La Hora, most likely.
So it's the intersection of six sixty-nine and six twenty-nine, I think they're talking about. Because the intersection of six sixty-nine and six twelve, which is Monrovia, is not a four-way intersection, it's a T, one stop sign.
If you do the four-way intersection there, you're, if somebody is.
You gotta do some room for it.
We can, um, also just go back with her through email.
Yeah.
As you can see, she had a, um, a real scary situation where she blew through the, uh, stop sign and she's hoping that we can get some caution ahead signs on that road so that we can try to avoid that for others in the future.
Yeah, if, if she, if she's talking about the intersection of Marquis and La Hora, I agree with her, that is a.
I also agree.
That, that's a trip, I'm telling you, I'd do it. That, that's a trip. I'm telling you, I do it frequently.
Yeah, I, I.
It's just below the green boxes that we have there on Marquee if, if you look for a reference. Line of sight is not much.
No, you go around the curve and there's a stop sign. Is there a general agreement then that, um?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, if that, if she's talking about the intersection we think she's talking about, then yes, um, we should contact VDOT and put that into place.
So we'll bring a resolution back at the, um, next board meeting for y'all to vote on and send to VDOT.
Sounds good to me.
Y'all know that I won't be here.
We can call you in.
Do.
Be hard to hear.
Yes.
Might be fun for her.
That's a pun on words, too. Okay. Uh, inclusion of the Rapidan River in the Department of Conservation Recreation, Virginia's Scenic River Program, Julie.
Mr. Chairman, I received a, a visit from, um, Mr. Hal Young this, uh, last week regarding the Rapidan River and potential analysis of the Rapidan River for inclusion in the Scenic River Program. Um, the Scenic River Program's been in existence for a while and is, um, a program that, as you can see in the attached sheet from the Department of Conservation Recreation, um, acknowledges a river from meeting certain criteria and, um, encourages the protection of it and the promotion of it and the, the, um, use of that river. Uh, what he would like for us to do is to reach out to DCR and ask for them to give an analysis of the Rapidan River. Once we get that analysis, we don't have to act, but we won't know if we qualify without having them at least, um, take a peek at the Rapidan River. A number of rivers in the, the state are part of this program and staff would recommend that we move forward with just requesting the analysis so that the board had the information it needed to, to act for or against the Scenic River Program. One of the, the questions that was asked since the publication of the agenda was whether there was any restriction for water, um, the removal of water from a river that's designated as a scenic river. And we did, um, reach out to a former program administrator who confirmed today that there is no restriction of water being taken from a scenic river. That, that's not, um, a consideration at all. The deputy clerk did have information on that if you wanted to ask her about the conversation that she had.
Also earlier today, I had, had a conversation with, uh, lead supervisor Frame and he had, uh, spoken to RSA about this matter. And they voiced some level of concern that it might impact what they're doing. And I, I, I talked to Tom briefly about that to, to see what he knew in terms of any impacts. So I, I don't know if you've had a chance to look, look at that or think about it at all.
Yeah, I actually read the whole state code on it, which is not saying much. It's six little sections. Uh, the only requirement right now or limitation that has existed is you can't create a dam without general assembly approval. That was the only, um, there's some language about, well, you'll have consultations with DCR, but the only technical prohibition or potential problem would be that if you ever wanted to create a dam in part of the scenic river, you have to have general assembly approval. The only other problem that you could have theoretically is once you accept scenic river approval, there's nothing to stop the general assembly later from adding other provisions to the state code with respect to scenic rivers. But as of right now, the only thing that it would cause would be a prohibition on damming up any part of the river.
Now with that too, I understand, I think that we don't have to designate the entire.
Yeah, I don't need to think.
No, you can pick a stretch of the river and designate it. We, we did this when I was in Hopewell and we designated a s- a particular stretch of the Apennales for scenic river.
And we can pick it up and stop it at other places. Um, Dr. Yu- uh, Dr. Young was talking about having a stretch from one county all the way a few counties over and that might be a little ambitious, but we can have certain stretches that we, um, want to feature rather than others.
Right.
And right now, this is just a, a fact finding, information gathering, um.
It, it's a, um, a process to get the designation. This is us reaching out to DCR saying, hey, we have an interest in this program. Will you see if we qualify? And then they'll give us information and we'll still have to take additional steps to actually be designated.
Well, I'm all for that. For us to get information and then.
Yeah, investigate it before we make a decision, so.
And then, um, if we could reach out to RSA and actually have them, um, put pen to paper to actually find out what their concerns are instead of a broad brush, of course they have concerns.
Yeah, I, I have no details at this point. I got just a phone call from, from Lee who was out of the state, so. And also I, I, we should.
It might mess up their, their mix in the Kool-Aid down there that they drink. Grover.
We, we should identify what se- what, what segments, uh, we're talking about. I mean, is it the old northern border of the county or is it?
Sure. And that's part of what the analysis with DCR, they'll actually come, they'll, um, they'll canoe the river before they, um, qualify for designation if it qualifies. But, but they'll give us maps and give us information to consider.
I, I will tell you, there's a, there's a bullet in the DCR, uh, sheet that you gave us that, that gives me pause. Which is, it's the second bullet, which is a, is a very, uh, open-ended one, it seems to me. Designation declares the protection of the river scenic values to be a beneficial purpose of water resource policy. I hear a big truck coming potentially.
Well, that's what I'm saying. State code doesn't technically currently allow them to drive the truck through that, but that doesn't prevent the general assembly from changing the state code.
That, that, that's a door with hinges on four sides, I'm afraid. I, and it, it, it might be nothing to it. I'm, and I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to this, but I'm only concerned that we take some steps to understand what we're talking about, both in terms of the segments of the river and any unintended consequences that might be out there. And I, you know, I, I, I would hope that the RSA folks know a lot more about this than I do, so.
Can we also, and, and I think this might be something that we get, but other areas, I mean, I know I was at a Rappahannock, um, River Basin Commission meeting in, um, Fredericksburg a couple of years ago and they did a presentation on, on this and, um, and, and the localities that had it and, and, you know, the, the per.
We can ask Ms. Crump to come speak to y'all about it.
Uh, w- w- I, I don't know that that's, I mean, that, that might be a good idea, but I don't even know. But other places that have done this and, um, you know, cause they, they did a whole thing, uh, uh, can, uh, her mind, her name is escaping me, but the, the, the canoeing lady that came in a couple of weeks ago and, um, Beth.
Beth, yeah.
Um, you know, there's segments of river, you, and they talked about the comp- there were other tourism things that were driven in, in, in the benefit that they were having in these other localities. But of course, you know, when somebody's putting on something, um, and they want you to do it, they make it so you want to do it and, um, but talking about what Jim was saying, you know, there may be segments of the Rapidan that this would work well in and then there might be segments that it isn't as, um, beneficial.
So we're in agreement then to look at it and have them tell us what it is and then we'll figure out where we can go. Okay. All righty. Uh, any question then on information items or the committee reports?
I, I actually have a question for, on the, uh, CSA. Now, now that the year is over, do, do you have a final answer as to where you landed?
Um, I do not because CSA continues to, um, operate the way the state's budget cuts off, um, through, so, sorry.
Yeah, I did. Sorry.
That's okay.
It is. Go ahead.
No, um, CSA's budget, even though ours cuts off June thirtieth, it continues to run through the, um, through September, up to September. So we will continue to get some of the billing and all of that in. So as soon as I get a final number, I will let you know. Um, did find out since we're on CSA that we have been moved to fiscal year fourteen for our audit. We have not heard any other information other than we've been moved forward. So just wanted to let you know.
And the, the invoices now are a month behind?
Yes, invoices are a month behind, so.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you. All righty.
Um, all right. Well, then on the calendar, uh, we're rescheduling for July thirtieth at six thirty. Is that good for everybody? Hearing no complaints, let's make it so then. With that, um, I guess let's go into closed meeting because we've finished discussing the public here.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating portion of public value. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of aforesaid matters in closed meeting.
So.
Second.
My favor say aye?
Aye.
Close. Ready?
All right. To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting?
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Prince absent, Mr. Deff.
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Grubman?
Aye.
Okay. Go back into open session and we'll go back to the cola with our new updated information.
I did check on that figure, um, on the, um, what it, uh, you know, what the number would be without the retirement. And it was, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, very close to the two thirty that was the rough estimate. And, um, I also checked on the, the twenty dollars that the employees pay for their individual coverage. And, uh, that comes out to forty-eight thousand dollars for the year. For, that's county and social services employees.
Okay.
Were there any other questions that I needed answered?
You scrolled to the other number. I, I don't think you're showing it. Well, actually up then, I'm sorry. Two sixty-eight?
Two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two thirty-two.
So roughly three hundred thousand would be the cost of adding back the insurance.
Did the schools make a final determination of what they're gonna do with respect to that insurance? I know they were.
They pay it all.
Yep. They talked about it and then decided not to change it.
Uh, uh, the reason I like the insurance is, is because it's the one thing that, um, especially people, um, on the lower, everybody's paying twenty dollars. So the higher salary people, they're not, they're not noticing it as much. But they're gonna notice a two percent raise more than someone who is, um, at the, at that lower, at the lower level. And I think they would notice that, that insurance, um, you know.
Well, if you're back to talking the difference between twenty-five and a hundred, the twenty-five, yeah, two percent is only five hundred dollars. The insurance is only twenty dollars a month. That's two hundred and forty. You get.
Yeah.
A cola, you get more.
But I'm not saying do one or the other. I'm saying do both.
Yeah, well, you can. I mean, the, the point of doing what we do with the insurance, it's an ever-increasing expense. In the beginning of the twenty was that it becomes untenable to support it all. Then like the real world where my payment is way, way more than any twenty dollars a month. Then, um, that, that was a way to adjust cost.
Right, but I also say our insurance is not cheap. Our insurance is not cheap. A, a, a family of three, our insurance is astronomical. It is not cheap. I don't know what yours is a, a month, but I mean, it's six, seven hundred dollars to put a family of three on insurance here. And that's with the, the, the employee being paid. I, I don't know what your insurance costs, but, um, and, and I do, and, and I do know, I, 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 I was one of the ones who advocated for paying a part of it.
Glenda, can we pay ourselves back the forty-eight thousand dollars from the reserve we create with Anthem at the end of the year? If we in advance give the twenty dollars a month now?
Um, I believe so. But I guess, uh, you know,
Yeah, I'd be reluctant to.
the, the technical details of, once it's in that account, whether it meets the requirements, whether a use like that would meet the requirements, I guess, for, um, for taking it out. David Blanchard explained it's gotta be for insurance. I'm not sure that that works, but theoretically, you know, I think that probably would pay us back.
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read Jim's mind. I, I don't want to do the yo-yo, give it back to him and then we turn around and take it back from him again later too, so I.
Well, I'm also concerned about the uncertainty of this thing that's, this train that's coming down the track.
The self, yeah, all insurance altogether.
Insurance altogether.
Right.
I mean, starting next year, there's so much uncertainty as to what's gonna happen. I mean, you're, you're hearing some of the horror stories already, so I. Twenty dollars is not a huge protection, I admit, but, uh, it, it does, you know.
Formulate a habit.
It sort of, yeah, gives us.
Sets precedent.
It, it sets a precedent that I think is probably one that we.
Might not, and it might not be one y'all like, but it, it does precedent, so.
Um, I'm fine with the cola increase. I was one of the ones who said that I wanted us to look at the contingency when we were doing the budget and that I had a problem with, um, half or majority of the employees getting a increase and some of them not getting an increase and, um, with schools. I, I think there needs to be, um, some equity with that because y'all are all county employees. So.
So would you make a motion then to approve the cola as?
I, I would make the motion to approve the cola. I didn't know if you wanted to do it since you had made it earlier.
No, I, I only made it as chairman because no one else was doing it, but ideally I'm the last resort. Um, well, no, I mean, you can be a chairman. You don't do it unless you don't hear anything and you want it, then you do it, so. All right, so we have a motion. Do I have a second? I will second the motion. Do we have a motion and a second?
Oh, my God, y'all might want to mark that in the, uh, minutes right there.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Deff?
Uh.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Okay, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Y'all deserved it.
We deserve more than two percent.
Yeah, but we don't have more than two percent. I, I've been doing two percent where I am for the last six years, so. But with that, we have a few minutes to sit here. Can, are we close enough, sir, that we can start or?
No, technically not. Technically, we noticed it for seven thirty. We have a mad rush in the last three minutes. People want to speak on, uh, when interest starts on your delinquent taxes.
Do we have a little key for that thing? We'll turn it up a little bit.
We can let it's hung a little bit past.
Well, that's the official one, isn't it?
You can present it.
I will present it. Uh, this is, this is an ordinance. We, um, the, uh, the treasurer caught this and she pointed out to me, said, well, we don't start charging interest until January tenth. And she said, I don't know why that is, because your taxes are due in December. And so we're just amending it so that your interest starts the day after you go delinquent as opposed to, I don't know where that January tenth date came from in our current ordinance. And so check the state code and you're allowed to collect interest from the very day after. So we're just amending the ordinance so that the interest starts accruing and she doesn't have to do a calculation. so that the interest starts accruing, and she doesn't have to do a calculation starting in January tenth, well, the reality is she's been doing the day after. Cause she assumed that's what the ordinance said, and so, um, and, uh, we're just making it legal.
Creating the ordinance to work with, with, with actual reality.
We're getting the ordinance to match reality and match state code.
Okay. You need to talk for a minute and twenty seconds more, so.
Should have had something more complicated, I don't know.
Okay. We'll ponder this for one minute.
Anybody want a candy? I've eaten two, I'm awake, I might as well eat a third.
I think we need candy for the retreat, is everybody in agreement?
No, it's too long of a day for that.
Well, the ladies in the office today were suggesting no more candy and start bringing fruit.
Yes, that was Susan, and she is candy deprived.
Motion denied.
I don't think we need candy, I think we need Prozac for that all-day-long meeting, some type of.
Two-day meeting.
Two-day meeting.
I think it'll be alright. Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing, do you have any speakers?
No, sir.
Closed public hearing, any further discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the, um, ordinance to get in line with state code and actually what we've been doing, so.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I would make a motion, um, that we adjourn this lovely meeting.
Second.